And she, she, uh, cause I, I wondered that too.
Yeah, I didn't know.
And she said, yes, she would.
Okay.
Obviously, uh, that's where it's nice to have a bigger list to draw from. Some that she would either preclude herself from, or by statute, you can't be in your own drainage district. So, but she is, is being on the list of commissioners, yes, she would maintain staying on that list.
Okay.
I would like to keep her on there as long as we can in order, she's got experience. So, it only makes sense to have her work with some of the people that have her. And so if we can't teach them some of what they're doing, I, I don't have.
Well, if they have questions, yeah, that's why we're doing this, cause we basically have Brett and Pat.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, people stay on there and like Bruce said, then they have two good people that if you.
Go learn one.
Call upon these new people and they may say, well, can I talk to the others? Certainly, get, get up to speed before you serve.
So, would we take the whole list?
I think absolutely.
I think so.
If they're willing to serve, I'd, I'd welcome them.
And we have people to draw from as it gets scattered around the county.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I don't know if we have to formally.
I think we do, it says, uh, possible.
Well, I would make the motion then to, uh, approve all of the folks listed, uh, either current or new members for drainage commissioners.
I would second that motion.
Now, the first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Sandy?
She's aye.
And now, this motion carries. All right, it's close to nine fifteen. We have an application for approval of construction of private tile crossing within the whole county right of way. One twoship township, section seven. Now, this is a project that's been going, ongoing for a while. Bruce F. here's kind of heading the, the project. It's, uh, involves a boring under, what is the name of that road?
D nineteen.
D nineteen. Which is a pavement and our new ordinance requires a boring under hard surface roads, which the county has put a maximum payment of fifteen thousand, is that correct?
Uh, if, if somebody wants the, to go the faster route versus following, uh, four sixty-eight, six hundred for individual drainage law, yes, uh, we will share fifty percent of the cost up to fifteen thousand or fifty percent of the cost up to two thousand for private open crossing across the gravel road. But if somebody goes through all of the steps in, uh, the individual drainage law, they can be eligible for the county to pay for everything within their right of way. I believe that's, uh, and I, I don't remember the exact number, but it's part of the individual drainage law.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, four sixty-eight, six twenty-two.
Okay, that sounds right.
Yeah. And Bruce, you were following this with the auditor? Actually, I think Martin was ready.
Yeah, I think it was, uh, Gary Barr was the one that filed the petition.
Okay, Gary Martin. There are landowners in this project? Okay. Uh, where is the info so we can look at it?
Do we have any tiles running? The depth and start and finish and angle of the road crossing and all that? Is that in there?
That it doesn't have in, I'm sure, um, I'm sure the guy that traveled to the work area.
That's what Chris had sent out, it's all landlords. There's somebody here. Kind of paralleling a existing line.
Yeah.
What is the coefficient of this project?
You going through, I don't know, a one inch or half inch drainage coefficient, you know, you're after?
I think it's three quarters.
Do we have that information in here? What it is, where it started, where it finished?
There's maps on it, there's a little tile line going through, I believe. And I even, he does want to be a part of it, he's in over there.
Is that aerial map, Dave, on the second to the last page?
Last page, there's a map. Now. The outlet is what size and what size is it at the upper end?
It's an eighteen, because we're in a pond and that's the highest thing. So, it's an eighteen hallway. Except the eighteen end is a gravel road with a lot of stuff, there's a gravel road all streaming around.
Yeah, it looks like it goes across the gravel road.
The county's spent four thousand dollars, that's why it's not on that map, is that the, that's the. Mark Calmer's maps, so Scott's on his, his gravel road.
So, you're aggressive.
That means that'll be an eighteen inch.
Mark Calmer's.
It's gotta be heavier at one end than the other.
Well, they just, it needs its private, they can do whatever.
This is the cost? You have that sheet?
It's different.
This is different?
Eighty thousand, what's that one?
Eighty-four.
That was submitted after the thing was sent out, so I.
So, Ben, as, as you've looked this through, what's your thoughts on it?
I guess my thoughts are the, the information that's missing is, uh, the, the engineering side of it. Everything appears in order as far as the, the legal documentation. What I would want if I was one of the property owners involved is obviously the type of tile that Bruce mentioned. Uh, your starting and your ending point, it could just be, uh, your X, Y, and Z coordinates. Anywhere that you're turning, um, what your drainage coefficient is, what slope of the line is that you're running. I'm sure it's all, it's everything that, uh, Mark Calmer has in his design file, because it's pretty hard to install tile if you don't have any of that stuff. It'd just be something that Mark would have to determine, because I'm sure he's got it all on his digger. He's digging everything by GPS, I assume, yeah.
We've got a telephone conference between the landlords already, and they all asked these questions. And they're all happy with what's in there, before they launch. But I know, we're gonna have a telephone conference after this, and then correct.
Hey, why don't you hear?
Yep.
I guess if, if, if I'm making a request for secondary roads because of the cost of the boring, uh, you definitely aren't allowed to do that perpendicular to the road. To keep the boring as short as possible.
Eric, do you want to look at this?
What's that?
Do you want to look at this?
What is it?
It's, uh, paperwork.
He just, he shared it with the.
Yeah, I, yeah, I already looked at it. I mean, I, first of all, due to Ben, if it, I wouldn't think county-wise, uh, and I think state does this too, I mean, their boring, it is perpendicular. There is no angle allowed. They pay for the distance of the right of ways, I think the way he described it then.
The same with like a drainage district project, even if the drainage district goes through at an angle, the county's only responsible for the perpendicular distance.
Yep.
And Mark, Mark, this, uh, it is going typically for, for, there is a curve, but we're not going, you know, we're going straight.
Okay.
Yeah, that's up, you get the boring line, just straight, yeah.
Has it been figured out who's gonna be doing the boring?
Uh, I reached out to a private contractor after Calmer was having difficulty finding one. Uh, RTS out of Ankeny is the contractor that I tracked down. I spoke to him last Thursday. He said it'd take four or five days, once he put the order in for the material, to get that delivered. And he figured on a three day bore. He said as long as temperatures are in the upper twenties, he'd have no problem doing it. But if mother nature decides that it's gonna go on a cold street.
Yeah.
He has to shut down.
Um, what's the cost, what's he looking at?
Uh, the quote that I have was about twenty thousand plus another four for Moe. I think it came in like right around twenty-four, five.
Mobilization.
How many, how many acres does this project deserve?
Three hundred and fifty, I believe it was, two fifty-two.
I didn't see one in there.
Hmm.
Engineers report is.
Yeah, we're, I mean, all the drainage that we deal with, this, that's obviously drainage district. But anytime we get involved in projects that, uh, are done, we get engineers reports. And, I mean, unless I miss something, we're not seeing an outright an engineer's report. That's why I only, I mean, Rick's been diligently studying the code. The only point I wanted to make on this, everybody's consideration.
Bruce, I, I think the, the board can waive the requirement for a formal engineer's report if the project is, is simplified enough. But it still should have, like, your, your starting, your ending point, the size, slope, drainage coefficient.
As you read through this, do you see that?
No.
Well, that's what I was, that's why I asked that question, I didn't see. Uh, and the, and the reason I asked that question is because if a drainage, you know, most of all of our projects are one inch or less. And if we're having to pay for a boring that had like a two inch coefficient, I think would be overkill. And that's why I'd like to know what the coefficient of this project is. You know, because now we can get by with a fifteen inch bore, which maybe, might be a lot less. That's, that's just my thoughts. Uh, I know we are doing a similar project, uh, up for, um, sub-two up there, sub-two of seven. And it's draining close to five hundred acres and they're using an eighteen inch, I believe. And that's a, that project, right?
I'm not sure the si, are you talking tile size?
Tile size.
Or the, what, what, well, maybe Ben knows.
No, the end of the road is at the end of the project, but.
Yeah, that's a gravel road crossing.
Yeah, but I think tile size is an eighteen.
You think it's eighteen, I, I don't remember for sure, but it, it could be, I don't think it's any bigger than that.
It puts a lot in pounding the acres, because your gravel road is where it's pounding on, trying to get the water off your gravel road. And that's the end of the time, that's why it's having an eighteen up there. Cause it's been a wet gravel road for years, and you had to have road blocked up, you had a hog house that had to browse the road, just stopping, dropping for it. So, you don't think that coming, they usually come in, cause they come in from the south.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Sure.
Good morning, uh, this is Brett Legbold, uh, I'm attorney with Aaron's Way. And I'm here representing, um, one of the landowners in the project, the Gillis family. And the only comment I want to make is, uh, I understand the, the code saying, hey, we want, uh, an engineer's report, but the board has the ability to waive it, as Ben said. Um, and obviously, we'd really like to get by without the full engineer report. Um, and I understand that, that the county would like, uh, a little more information. Uh, I believe the contractor, uh, he intended to be there, Calmar, um, but Ben, you know, better than I, I, I don't know the contractor, but I assume anybody doing a tile project like that is going to have that information.
They should.
Wants. Um, and, and so, the, the landowners certainly don't think that the additional expense of an engineer's report here is necessary when the project is simply installing a new main alongside an existing one. And I think the addition, the additional information can be easily obtained, uh, from the contractor.
Okay.
My two cents.
So, then my question back to you would be is if, if that, if we were able, or you were able to do that, we have the assurance that all of the land people, every, all of the landowners are in agreement with this? There's no opposition?
No, one of the, one of the items that you're asking is, is the drainage tile agreement between the private landowners and the project. They're all on board with, with the project as it's been presented to, to this board. If, if the county says, hey, uh, we want an engineer's report, I don't know what that means for the project. Uh, certainly didn't plan on having that expense. We, we've been working with an engineer, uh, to the extent we think necessary to get the parties what they need and the county what they need. But yes, the private landowners are on board.
As lo, as long as that's the case, I just don't want somebody at the end of the project saying, well, we didn't know, we weren't, we didn't really.
We weren't invited.
We weren't invited to listen. So, we're the ones that have to make the decision that you don't need that.
The only, the only person, um, who was notified, uh, that isn't in the project is, uh, Martin Dowd. And, um, uh, he's, he's outside the watershed as proposed, um, with this new tile main. But the existing tile main does run through some of his property into a pond. Um, you know, if you were upset by this proposal, you can either write out. Um, and, and the other thing is I understand too, that existing tile main, it, it doesn't have enough capacity. Uh, it's, it's needed extensive repairs, it's a deep tile. Um, and, uh, I think there's been even some backup, Bruce can, can explain more, but I think Bruce has had to do some digging to try and clean up, um, some of that existing tile that leads into, um, Mr. Dowd's pond. So, um, he would be the only one who, who might have something to say, but his opportunity to say it is not.
Okay. Could I, Bruce?
To answer that question, there's Mark Calmer about doing a survey at the end of the year last week. Dave's out, lives there on the corner, their farm's a farm. Asked us, what are you gonna outlet, you're not gonna put it in a pond again, cause it washes out a little bit. And Mark Calmer says, right though, that track is gonna go across Craig's Valley, so they're gonna dump there. Dave's out, Dave's out to the trees. I'm glad to hear that. But Dave's out, okay. He's wasn't very much into pop, so his dad won't, he won't be.
So, I mean, I think it's more likely that the, cause if we would get complaints by going into that pond and doing what we're doing, I'm just trying to, to avoid it.
The pond does not have a spillway, uh, tubes spillway, so it washes out. We've done four times, Martin's went in and put rocks in it, but it grew up to here, and here's our outlet here. And it's blowing out our tile here and there, and well, that's why we want to divert around the pond. And, and Dave's out and used to it, too, he thinks it'd be a good idea. Don't worry about the pond.
That's part of the reason that the, they've had problems with the tile is because their tile's down here.
The dam's too high.
And they've filled the dam for the pond clear up here, so you've got five foot ahead pressure building up in that tile line. You gotta go five foot higher in elevation before the thing wants to even.
Okay.
Bring water out.
But there is a lot of fall from that three hundred feet.
Well, as long as the drainage coefficient is one inch or less, I'm fine with the project as long as it runs perpendicular to the road. So, if we can get that drainage coefficient, that's my opinion.
Is that something that Calmar would want? Fifty, I mean, he should have your, your start, your end, your.
Those, those numbers, yeah, that, all of those locations of the pipe.
Is that fair to him?
I mean, we need an eighteen up in the hole, it's heavy, it's, like, used to.
I understand that.
Down the bottom, right? So, I don't know where it's gonna change. That's when I can't figure out what you're asking for, cause you know it, it needs to be there.
Well, no, you, we don't know it needs to be an eighteen, you're telling us it needs to be an eighteen.
Well, if it wasn't a four up the top end, I agree with you a hundred percent, okay?
I mean, a twenty-four, it'd even be better than eighteen, you can tell us that, but you see what I'm saying, Bruce?
I know what you're saying, but.
We have to have something to tell us it's needed.
Well, you.
Other than you telling us it's needed.
Can I say this? Ben did look at it, and he thought it was supposed to be a fifteen one time, and then he looked at it, he told me it's an eighteen, he didn't ask him for it.
That's part of them, yeah.
So, he okay?
That's, that's.
I, I'd say, yeah, I mean, that, we are, we have the discretion.
The guy has the information, just give it to us.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it's fair to have the required information.
We want to get this thing moving on, but we want, he wants to maybe start digging in two weeks.
Well, we, we should have this stuff easily by next week, right? Cause he's already got the information, I just do it, write it out and tell us what.
If Calmer did this, the surveying and everything, he's got your start, your end, everywhere that it bends, he's just gotta write it out on a piece of paper and, and turn it in.
Give us a little bit of a map and.
Because if you're.
Drainage coefficient.
You're filing the, the drainage agreement, which I assume you will, the legal document, you're gonna want the location of all that tile tied into that legal document. So, then if you have to dig it up eighty years from now, you know.
They know where it's at. Cause these guys will be long dead.
So, what specifically do you want?
But there's a, I think their aerial photo shows the tile, and they want to stop starting gravel road.
Yes.
I thought it was a dam.
Your aerial, your aerial, you're stopping on.
Drainage coefficient.
The north side of the gravel.
So, you have to find what it is on your photo.
Well, you don't have.
Oh, so that's the, that's the elevation, so that's elevation.
Yes.
Okay.
If they get those, Rick, then we're good.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
But assuming that, that, uh, Mark gets all of that turned in this week, if I say I can contact my boring contractor and tell him to order the, his supplies?
Yes, if it's all, to me, if it's under, you know, I, I don't wanna approve a project that's a two inch coefficient and, and the county has to pay for something that's overkill, is what I'm saying.
I'll wait until I've been notified that.
I ain't bothered, I got it. I got one question while we're discussing this. What about that gravel road crossing?
It's gonna be on the county, uh, we'll end up doing that probably next summer.
Cause if I understand what information we've got now, that this project does go across that road.
Well, this, this particular project does not, I mean, the, the hole from Calmer, I guess, starts at the north end of the, the north side of our right of way.
Okay.
But they've included portions of, uh, the south side as part of this project. So, it's my understanding that the county is responsible for crossing the gravel road and bringing it to our south end of our right of way. And then whoever the farmer is on the south side.
Can hook his private tile.
Can hook his private tile, a deep pattern tile that can hook into that, uh, to drain.
You're talking a hundred and twentieth?
A hundred and twentieth.
Yeah.
Now, I, I'm not planning on crossing gravel road with an eighteen inch. I'll, I'll say that right now, it's probably gonna be a twelve, cause you've got only about thirty acres on the south side that come that way.
Cause most of the water's set on the north side of the road.
That's right on the gravel road, it's a whole pond, but you gotta, if you put a two underneath the road, I'm thinking there is, I'm not sure. It would equalize the loss.
So, you have that factored in, is my question, there's.
That's not part of the cost, you know. I mean, the, the, just the boring's twenty-four thousand.
Right.
The, the cost of crossing the gravel road and the county staff to do it.
Couple thousand.
Couple thousand.
But you, that is something you're planning to do, but.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I understood that that was expected of us as part of this project as well. To do the gravel road crossing.
Okay.
Well, we can get it done cheaper with you, right?
I mean, we, we can hide the, the cost of the labor.
Right.
Our expense is gonna be for sixty-six foot of, of pipe under the road.
Exactly.
Okay. Good with that, Bruce? I know you'd like to say okay today, but we, we really need that information. And you already have it, so just give it to us.
I'll, I'll call Mark.
Okay.
I'd like to have you guys call Mark, I'm just, I'm just, I don't know that.
But really not our project, uh, drainage district.
Yeah, I'll call Mark.
Okay.
But I wanna keep the paper what you actually want, like Chris there, so I don't screw it up.
Okay, you writing, writing that same list down there?
Yeah.
We got a start, end, bend, elevation, drainage coefficient. And, and also it requires, uh, brand of pipe and what type of pipe you're putting in. That's required in the code.
We know, yeah, we know the size is eighteen.
Yeah, but we don't know the, the type of pipe, with a smooth wall, double wall.
I got you.
Double wall smoothly, yeah, but it, but it has, it has to be recorded in the, in the recorder's office with that information. Okay. Okay.
Are we good with that? Do we need a motion on there?
Probably not till next week.
Not till next week?
Do you need anything on the outlet of it?
It's the location.
Okay, table until next week.
Something we need to drop.
I'll make a motion to table this till next week so we can get all the information.
Okay, and a first, to table it, second, second from Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now, this motion carries.
Just so you know, I called the house, we looked at both these questions, they needed any more information for this period to be settled, and that should have settled earlier.
Okay. But you know, Bruce, I think I told you all the same stuff back in December when our last meeting was. I think I repeated exactly the same stuff, but we need to have that.
For county tile, do you?
Yeah.
So, I go through private tile, you don't?
No. Well, we do need it when we're gonna pay. Two thousand to the taxpayers money, we don't wanna undersize it or oversize it, we want it to be the right size, so. Get that.
And I think it should be a fairly easy fix.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else? You got anything else?
No, nothing else.
Motion to draw drainage.
Yeah.
You got a first, a second, a water drainage, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are back in general session now.
That's mine.
That's the one you said, I'm pretty sad.
I gave it to.
I'll pick up your list later on, too, I'll be back.
Okay, great.
Well, then she'll be on your sheet.
There you go.
Right, right on that sheet, do that.
Okay.
I'll be back very soon.
Thank you.
Be back very soon.
I don't know, I handed it over, I don't know.
Bruce, you're, you're washing your hands, is it?
I'm washed, I get accused of losing enough stuff.
I handed it that way.
I. I don't have it, it has to be going now.
We got it, we got it.
Got it, I got it.
I just put it, put it.
Okay, we're back in general session, uh, looks like we have Ben for mailbox ordinance.
So, I, I, same thing that happened to me last week happened to me, I did not get this into the paper in time to get it published in last week's paper for the change in, uh, ordinance language. Um, I think I emailed you guys the proposed change, basically, that's what we talked about last week, eliminating the size of locate, or the size of the replacement mailbox, and just doing similar. Eliminating the size of locate, or the size of the replacement mailbox, and just doing similar size. Uh, obviously, if somebody's got an ornamental mailbox, we would not be covering that, we would just be replacing-
Similar standard size.
On a, on a wooden post. Uh, so I will get the copy to the paper, so that they can publish it in this week's paper, so we can do the official second hearing.
You ready, Mike?
I was.
Next week.
Talking, I have a-
You get a different meeting today. No, that would be great, too.
Well, if we can consider this the first reading, then, I guess. Like, like we did last week. Uh, I don't know what, yeah, so you didn't, obviously didn't get it published, so this could be considered the first reading of said ordinance.
And then we just do the second, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I don't know, I approve the first, make a motion that we approve the first reading at this point.
Okay, can I get a second? Second from Sandy, uh, so we have a first and second on the first reading of ordinance sixty-seven on our mailbox replacement.
Amendment.
Amendment, basically, yeah, amendment to it, to basically change the size to a similar standard mailbox, similar size standard mailbox.
Similar sized.
Yeah, similar size that they had.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Order change, call. Right, because I'm getting better at this. Bruce?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Gee?
Aye.
Aye, Eric, I'll go with aye also. So first reading is approved. All right.
Then there was, on the, we, earlier we did the general rural services to the secondary road fund, the transfers, was there anything in there that got to the street?
That was just half of our, uh-
Allotment, or?
Yeah, for our scheduled income.
We were running a little quick, so we moved that forward, I didn't know if there was anything you needed to-
Tell us about?
Nope, that's just, uh, basically covers a lot of our day-to-day operations.
Just moving the money from here to up to your place.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we did have our bid letting through the DOT on Wednesday, uh, decided to say we had the cheapest asphalt prices we've had in about ten, fifteen years.
Wow.
I do not know why, uh, we had seven, seven or eight, seven bidders, I believe, on the project. Um, the apparent low is Matthew Construction.
Is that someone we haven't worked with before?
I have not worked with them, I think they worked here in two thousand or two thousand and one. It is prior to me being here, they recently purchased Four Dodge Asphalt, so I don't know if it's gonna be Four Dodge Asphalt trucks coming up here, or if it's gonna be Matthew.
They're a large company, if that matters.
They're a large company.
Very large.
Hartland was second, uh, OMG Midwest was third, Blacktop Service fourth, Western Engineering fifth, and Henningson was sixth, so we had six bids.
Okay.
And Wyden Inc. was the low bidder, or the apparent low bidder on the box holder replacement down on Washington Avenue southeast of Door. Uh, and that came in under the estimate as well.
Okay.
So, when I have official contracts from the DOT, I'll have them on the agenda for approval.
So the asphalt you said was under asphalt?
Yes, yeah, quite a bit under, I think.
Even with oil in limbo?
Yes.
I figured that that was gonna go through the roof.
Yeah, we-
It's gone pretty well.
We, uh, we budgeted, um, a little bit higher than what we had paid last time, what the market was trending towards last, last year, or last construction season. And, uh, for whatever reason, it was quite a low, I've actually tried talking to the DOT people, we could do maybe add a couple miles.
Ben, with help and some of the stuff we discussed here recently, kind of, you know, not what I call patching, but some of the other projects, we're gonna be get done, you know, in the whole projects, as they were, yeah, less, less money, or have more money towards some repairs and some resurfacing, going a little further with it.
I spoke to them earlier with the, the DOT last Thursday or Friday, when I seen the prices, and basically asked them, you know, can we do an extra work order to add a few miles, as long as the contractor's agreeable to do it at the same rate? Um, and she said that she would do some checking, but she thought that was a possibility, so.
Excellent. I call the iron hot, because like you just said, it's probably not gonna go down.
Well, you know, I mean, if we, if we budgeted using two million in farm-to-market money, and we only ended up spending one point four, now all of a sudden I've got six hundred in farm-to-market money that we intended on spending, that we don't have allocated.
Yeah, we're on the project form.
Plus, you're able to get more bang for your buck right now, that's the biggest deal, awesome.
Do we have, I mean, do you have something that you'd be able to move, as far as-
Forward?
Move forward on the time?
I don't have, I've got, um-
If it works?
C twenty from low to McKnight Point has been a problem area for us lately, we did hold in place, and for whatever reason, it's falling apart. I've been getting quotes from, uh, local contractors, as well as, uh, repair companies like Four Dodge Asphalt, who does the slurry leveling for us. Um, and the price for repairing that road is, it's scary.
Scary.
It's, it's scary, it's-
There's a lot of miles there.
You're looking at about, uh, nine miles, and you're looking at roughly thirty-five thousand a mile for repair work. Um, or, you know, for a, a inch and a half sink a little relay, you're probably looking at seventy-five thousand a mile. Yeah, I'm waiting here back from the DOT, I'd like to dream like that, as well as these deliver more, uh, from the bridge going up the hill, that seems to, uh, be falling apart on us as well.
Okay. After giving my roommate a bad time for being in second place.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they were aggressive, they, they did it very tight.
Huh.
It worked, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Extra ones.
Yeah, I was, I was really happy last one, so.
Yeah. Anything else for us?
Uh, I don't believe so, we ran and moved some snow over the weekend, uh, they've got us calling for anywhere from one to ten inches, depending on which model you look at for the next two days, so.
I hope we're towards the one inch mark.
I hope so, too, yeah, that would be great.
I like watching on the news down in Des Moines, all the kids are playing in snow.
Right.
I think they need more snow down there, we don't need much more this night, I know quite a few schools down south have already called, turned early out.
Yeah.
They're already scrolling around the bottom of the television, so.
Okay.
Hopefully, we're on the light side.
Right.
All right. Well, let's go down to committee reports.
All right. On the nineteenth, Wednesday, excuse me, Tuesday, we had our UDMO financial meeting that got pushed because of Martin Luther King Day. On Wednesday, there was Zoom, on Wednesday, I did the conference call on ministerial board. Um, listened to, let's see, they did a hospice report, they did, uh, several different things that, uh, with the new building, um, I think that they're getting closer on the, I think I talked to, Jim Gromak told me that they had gotten most of the demolition done on that building, so pretty soon it's gonna be, um, starting the, the building part of it, so, um, everything else with the, in order and that, so those are the two that I had last week. Your turn, Sandy.
Okay. Okay, on the nineteenth, I had a meeting of the Cat daycare, um, everything is about the same on that zone, no big changes. Um, and then on, excuse me, the twentieth, I had a CSS, um, HR committee on that, and that was doing a lot, so, and again, that's just going over, you know, people who have left the company, uh, hiring, uh, there's been over a couple of policies, you know. And then also, that data determined that the limit to the building is up. And then, the thirtieth, the twenty-first, um, I had an Iowa forty-third, I, and the, um, local board, uh, meetings, I was doing, um, I was unanimously, um, appointed the, um, Cleo, which is the chairperson of the board, this Cleo, um, in Iowa forty-fourth. Bob West, I'm, I'm sorry, Rick West, he's been, and I are the only ones that are in charge on that, um, committee, and so, uh, this is something that I would better work on.
I was gonna ask you that, Sandy.
Chang, that's on me, I just have a chance, I was trying to get them now, they made it, they beat me, so, yeah. Um, and then Friday, every other Friday, we have a, a Zoom meeting with Iowa forty, um, for these gates, um, with Mr. Michelle and the Mertney, and that is just basically to keep us, um, on target for the changes that are taking place, and what we have, so far, we've done a really good job of keeping, um, our area five on target, um, as long as the state doesn't change things, and for some reason, every time we get something done, it's great to come in and say, oh, well, we gotta do it this way now, or that way, so then we have to redo everything, and we do our R and P, like, two times, we know there's a lot of work anyway, um, to begin, so, yeah, they're all on target now, we've got, they also changed where, before, we just had a board support, um, last meeting before, they told me how to have a, a director, no, or, um, that position, so, um, Heather Garcia has graciously, um, accepted our offer to have her be our executive, and, or executive, she also does it for the region, so basically, it's really a, a very, very tight position, and, you know, what she does, the one board, she can kind of just work in with another one to change things, so that works really well, is that what that?
Okay, uh, I didn't have anything official. Sandy, was you gonna go on that conference call for the, uh, state supervisors meeting on Thursday?
Yes, yes, I, I've gotten signed up for that.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna sign up for that also. Uh, I asked Trish about it this morning, because we gotta send them some money, so.
I'm on the High Education Committee, and, um, it, they, they're also giving some, uh, uh, credits for the, um, county supervisor, you know, um, certified county supervisor, so since I'm on that education committee, um, we're pretty much, um, happy to do that also with that, so, yeah, we may just, uh-
Okay, well, I'll get signed up today on it.
Perfect, okay.
That's all I have.
And I don't know if any of you guys are interested in that county supervisor, the, um, the certified county supervisor?
I already, I already applied, signed up for that on the ISAC website, and, I don't know.
Okay.
Everybody else stopped and said, they said he hadn't signed up, I'm pre-registered for the virtual supervisors meeting Thursday.
How long is it?
I think it's one to three. One to three thirty, I think it is. Yeah, one to three thirty.
The governor's gonna talk.
The Zoom thing?
Yeah, virtual. The governor's gonna talk, and there's some other lady's gonna talk. Yeah, yeah, Thursday afternoon, one to three thirty, I think, they said. I looked at the agenda last night.
Okay, I think we'll get it later.
Well, for me, uh, this past Thursday, the twenty-first, I had a nine-one-one service board meeting down in the magistrate's courtroom that evening, that was my official meeting this past week.
Yep, okay, um, Thursday afternoon, and I had a conference call with Renee, our union rep, and I think Dean, Roger Bennett, um, it was all on that call, Corey Lampy, myself, seems like there's one other person on there, I can't remember who that was, if that was their representative or not. Uh, so I'll discuss that with you guys a little later, what they're, talked about in further union negotiations, kind of where we're starting at, anyway. That's all I have. Renee is looking at a date in February for the full board, I think she was looking at the seventeenth, possibly.
Who are coming up, or just been on the phone?
She didn't, no, if the weather was decent, she thought she'd come up, but she picked out three dates, I think they were the sixteenth, seventeenth, and the nineteenth, that were trying to get a date, was everybody worked out, so, it'd be that week, anyway, of the fifteenth, so we can work on negotiations.
Are we, are we getting any closer to gonna have work sessions on our budget? Any ideas as to when, because I kinda-
Do you guys come in on a day after the board meeting, or how do you do that, I guess?
Well, in the past, we've always just done it after the board meeting, sometimes it'll take us, we're here at one o'clock, sometimes we're at nine.
Let's be cautiously optimistic, it's not that late.
Well, I know.
I, we try to, I'd rather, we'd have a couple, rather than have one.
Well, we try not to do it on a day where we have drains, I mean, if we have a light schedule, we can go from nine o'clock to-
Till o'clock till-
Eleven.
We try, I mean, kind of segmented it, we look at X amount of data, information, so that it wouldn't be all day, you know.
Have, have the offices, other offices got their budgets to you?
Um, yep, and they're in, and we're waiting on one other one, I believe.
Okay. So it'd be good for you to sit down and go to our budget with us sometime, so we can get that into you.
And we, Commissioner, also, do you want that included?
Yes, I do, I mean-
On the budget review time?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, I've been working on that diligently.
So if we just did ours, you know, someday after a meeting quick, uh, most of the time, if we-
It shouldn't be too bad.
We don't try to do it all at once, is what I'm saying, we don't try to break it into bite-sized pieces over, you know, a couple, three weeks.
You do, she'd do two or three, she'd do however many, she would say, are you good for another one?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So, I mean, I, I guess that's what I'm after, because I need to know for, when I'm trying to line somebody else up to do what I'm doing, I just need to know my day's gonna be till one o'clock, or if my day's gonna be, I can go meeting, and that's all I'm after, so.
And it's hard for me to tell, because I don't know the steps.
I know. We'll, we'll work together.
That he's been kind of-
I hear that.
-with me on getting-
Why don't we set up next Monday after hours to go through our supervisors' budget?
Okay.
Because that shouldn't take too long, because we're not going to a lot of meetings.
I was gonna say, with the stuff on the phones and computers.
We don't have a lot of expenses.
Yeah.
I don't think this summer will be a whole lot different than last summer.
I think it's gonna be better.
Hey, Trish, will you make sure that you email me, so I can look at the, um, the budget that you're, we're gonna be talking about?
Yep, I will do that.
Perfect, thanks, Trish.
So if we set that aside, then we'll kind of get ours put together, and that can go for your puzzle, as to how you're setting for the rest of them, and then, I guess, as far as I'm concerned, we can start laying those in the next couple of weeks after that.
Because March is coming.
Yes.
You know, if push comes to shove, we can do that, like you mentioned, for, you know, our, our, so after next week's meeting, uh, you know, some counties do actually designate a time to everybody get together, and, and separate day and time. And if, if maybe, we'll see how that goes, and maybe by next week, we decide, you know what, let's just pick a date and time, and let's just sit down and handle it out, and be done with it.
I'd kind of like to do that myself.
I would, too.
You know.
Because rather, otherwise, it just screws up more weeks. Because rather, otherwise it just screws up more weeks.
Yeah, I mean, because you, we hope it's an hour plus and that it's going to be two when Rick said one o'clock and, you know, why don't we? I mean, I still think we can take a preliminary look at everything next week and then I think maybe if we decide we've got a lot of ground to cover, but, you know, a two, a two-hour work session on a time after the board meeting that everybody's scheduled fixed, then maybe we can actually really get it.
Maybe next week after our meeting, we can go over our supervisor budgets. You can kind of just tell us what our recorder's budget is and the treasurer's budget is. And then we can look at those and, if we don't have to go through them, just kind of look at them. And our sheriff, has he, has he gotten his deal?
Yes.
Okay.
He's waiting for the LEC part till the next meeting.
And then we'd know what we're up against and then maybe we can schedule a date and time to just go through the balance and just hammer it out and maybe be done with it.
Yeah.
Perfect. Works. It works.
We'll screw up less of your days, Bruce.
Well, I'm, I'm the one that signed up for this. I just need to make it work.
Well, it's nice when you know what your schedule is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, do we have anything else we need to discuss?
Trish, anything?
Take a point.
No. Nope. Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We got adjourned and all four.